I'd like to call the Tuesday, October 4th, 2016 Papillion City Council Meeting to order. Mr. Butler, would you please take the role?
Florence, Mumgarth, Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg.
We've got Boy Scout Troop 359 from St. Columbokil with us and I want to invite them up to help lead the pledge. Guys, you want to come up?
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate you coming out. Came out a little bit early and we're working on their citizenship badge and their communication badge. Mr. Hoynes, Administrator's report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'll begin my report this evening with a plea for any council member that is not doing anything tomorrow night. We still have open seats at the Sarpy County Chamber banquet for the city of Papillion. I think three seats. So if you're interested, let me know tonight or Nicole first thing in the morning for the Sarpy Chamber banquet. Also, later this week, October 6th, I think it's Thursday, several months ago, you purchased the home formerly owned by Mr. Goldsberry, I think 305 West Lincoln, right next to the Legion Club. And we'll be actually doing a controlled burn on that house. If you remember, that house was purchased to align the future road into the community center site. And so after several iterations of trying to move it and do some other things, it just was most efficient to go and take that down. So it's not a real house fire, if you will, but it's a real training exercise that's going on if any of your constituents ask. Attended the county board meeting today and I was contacted last week by Chairman Commissioner Don Kelly and he sponsored a resolution today at the county board that gave a memorial title of Shram Road from 132nd Street to the New VA Cemetery as Veterans Memorial Drive. Don offered that as a courtesy call and knowing that some point that will be in our jurisdiction and asked that pass that on to you that that's took place. And finally conclude my report that October 21 to 23 is the annual fall cleanup days. Friday, is it Thursday, Marty? Is it start or Friday?
Thursday.
Thursday through Sunday and you're going to have some real good help on Sunday, right?
Oh, yeah.
All right. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
That is correct.
And a current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the council chambers. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No.
Motion by Councilman Klug.
Second.
Second by Councilman Stube. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote.
Eight yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is item F1, Resolution R160133. A resolution to approve a real estate purchase agreement for the purchase of private property legally described as Lot 3 Chapman &amp; Horns Edition, generally located at 312 West Lincoln Street, Papillion, Nebraska, for future expansion of City Park. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R160133?
No.
Motion by Councilman Glover, second by Councilman Ingberg. Do we have proponents? Do we have any opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote.
Eight yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is item F2, Resolution R160149.
The owners are here, maybe.
Yeah.
Humbert, Scott and Kelly.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I don't make it a habit of interrupting the mayor. That's how I keep my job. But did want if Scott and Kelly Humbert could stand up. They're the folks that we've been working. They were very kind, appreciative, and respectful of the city and hopefully we treated you fairly and hopefully you're still staying in Papillion. Well, good. So thank you for your cooperation. I wanted to point that out. And I don't know if anybody from the Washburn family or they represented this evening. Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Next is item F2, Resolution R160149. A resolution to approve a real estate purchase agreement for the purchase of private property legally described as the west eight feet of Lot 1 and all of Lot 2 Chapman &amp; Horns Edition, generally located at 310 West Lincoln Street, Papillion, Nebraska, for future expansion of City Park. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R160149?
No.
Motion by Councilman Stube.
Second.
Second by Councilman Gaines. Do we have any proponents? Any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Eight yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Thank you. Item F3, Resolution R160147. A resolution to approve the construction manager agreement with Sampson Construction for the construction of Community Center and Park Expansion Project. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R160147?
No.
Motion by Councilman Klug, second by Councilman Glover. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Eight yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Item F4, Resolution R160151. A resolution to approve the permanent storm sewer drainage and storm water quality basin easement agreement with the Papio Missouri River Natural Resources District and GNT Properties LLC for the Thrasher addition development. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R160151?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Stube.
Second.
Second by Councilman Gaines. Do we have proponents? Opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote.
Eight yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is item F5, Resolution R160134. A resolution to approve an interlocal agreement with the city of Springfield and Sarpy County to adopt a boundary map between the cities, amend Sarpy County's 1995 County Industrial Sewer Construction Act Future Growth and Development Area Map, to agree to support future seeding and transfer of land by Sarpy County consistent with the boundary map and for the city of Springfield to dismiss pending annexation litigation against the city of Papillion and Sarpy County. We're going to ask if this be deferred to after closed session. I don't think we have to take a formal motion to amend the agenda. So we're just going to, we're going to go into closed session. Knowing we've got a number of students and scouts, though, I want to explain real quick what we're doing. It is very rare that all the elected officials can go behind closed doors and talk about not being in public. Everything we do has to be out in the public when there is a majority of the city council. But if we are doing something related to real estate negotiations, a lawsuit, or personnel actions, that time we may need to go behind to figure out negotiation strategy and you don't want to tip your hand to the other side. So we can go behind closed doors for a discussion, but we cannot take any votes. Any vote and discussion around that vote would come out in the public. So we're going to disappear for a while for a closed session. We will be back out and then we'll vote. We'll have a motion and a vote on that. So do we have a motion? I'm going to get over there. Is there a motion to go into closed session to protect the public interest to discussion litigation, to discuss litigation regarding annexation?
Mayor, can I ask a question first?
Yes.
A procedural question.
Yes.
Should we hold the public hearing on this before we go into executive session? I think, speaking personally, if there's somebody here who wants to speak on this one way or the other, knowing that would be, knowing their views would be beneficial to me when I get into closed session.
Procedurally, I don't think there'd be an issue with that. We'd take the motion, take the second, call for proponents, opponents, and then at that point defer. Is that appropriate? Okay. We'll go ahead and do it that way.
That'd be my preference.
Okay. We'll go ahead and do that. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R160134?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councilman Mumgarth.
Second.
Second by Councilman Jaworski. Are there proponents? Do we have any opponents? We do have an amendment. So I'm going to go ahead and do the amendment and then for the same reason and then we'll go into it. Is there a motion to amend Resolution R160134 to strike the language in quotes which reflect the agreed upon jurisdictional boundaries of Springfield and Papillion unquote on page 1, the 7th and 8th whereas paragraphs? And you do have that at your desk.
Yes, I would make that motion to strike that language. I assume the clerk has this in writing. Okay. That language in the last two whereas paragraphs that speak about Sarpy County action reflect that language you just quoted.
And that same-
Strike that language you just quoted.
And that same motion was provided to Springfield and to the county and the county has adopted it. Springfield's considering it tonight. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Ingberg. Do we have proponents? Do we have any opponents? We'll go ahead and go to closed session. Is there a motion to go into closed session to protect the public interest to discuss litigation regarding annexation?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Gaines, second by Councilman Glover. Do we have any proponents? Any opponents? Any council discussion? Mr. Ingberg.
Just to, just to point order, the, the, the public hearing is now closed, correct?
Well, we didn't actually have a public hearing. We just called for proponents and opponents.
All right.
Any count, other council discussion? Please vote.
Eight yeas, zero nays.
And I will restate for the record, the purpose of the closed session is only to discuss litigation regarding annexation. The closed session will include the mayor, the city council, city administrator, assistant city administrator, city attorney, city clerk, planning director, and staff attorney. We will return. Thanks for your patience. I'll restate the only topic discussed in closed session was litigation regarding annexation. Is there a motion to come out of closed session?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Klug.
Second.
Second by Councilman Stube. Please vote.
Eight yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. So the original motion as amended is on the floor. We've called for proponents and opponents. So we'll move into council discussion. Council discussion on the motion as amended. We did not vote on that? Okay. Procedural again. We had the motion to amend and it was seconded. We called proponents, opponents. So the council discussion is on the motion to amend. Any discussion on the motion to amend? Mr. Mumgarth.
I guess I'll save my discussion for the full document.
Okay. No other discussion. Please vote on the motion to amend.
Eight yeas, zero nays.
Now the motion is amended and we can have council discussion on the original motion as amended. Mr. Mumgarth.
Okay. Well, I'll kick this off. Let's start with the positive. I'm in favor of reaching an agreement with the city of Springfield on future boundaries. I don't, I'm not necessarily sold on that's the best long-term policy for the city of Papillion, but nonetheless, it's the policy that we have been following for years with other cities in Sarpy County and it has some very practical aspects to it. I went down and visited Springfield, gosh, seems like years ago, but to discuss the lawsuit and I told them that, that we would talk to them about boundary agreement when we wanted to, basically. So I'm going to vote for that. Having said that, I will express, I'm, you know, a general view, as the mayor pointed out, about boundary agreements. You have three boundary agreements with neighboring cities, La Vista, Bellevue, and Gretna. And I've voted for two out of those three. I did not vote for the La Vista one, but I live right next door to it. So I see it regularly. And I'll tell you that in hindsight, I'm not always convinced that my vote in favor of the Gretna and the Bellevue boundary agreements was the right thing to do. I drive down those highways and I see what you would all call natural growth and natural growth doesn't give a damn about what we say is boundary agreements. It just occurs. And natural growth and people's identification with their community has not always matched the wisdom of city councils in boundary agreements. So I address this boundary agreement with extreme caution and cynicism. It may be right. It may be wrong in 20 years. I don't know, but I know as a practical matter, it's the right thing to do. Given the fact that we have five cities trying to live together in Sarpy County, I think as a practical matter, boundary agreements just are necessary fact of life. And all we can really do is try to, you know, have enough vision and accurately predict where that natural growth will or won't go. And I will concede, I'm not so sure that we have that ability, but you know, you got to charge forward. And I'll tell you, continuing on with the lawsuit from Springfield, whether they're right, whether we're right, is beside the point. Establishing growth patterns and boundary, municipal boundaries within this county is not, is not something that should be done by lawsuits. It is not something that should be left up to the courts. Believe me, I spent my career dealing with the courts and I will say that without any hesitation that no, they're not qualified to do that. And yet, that's where Springfield has put us. It wasn't our option. It wasn't our choice, but that's where we're at. And the best thing we can do now is get rid of that burden. And we do that by reaching this agreement. And I commend Springfield. I think they're being, they're being appropriate in their action and agreeing to this boundary agreement. Unfortunately, I think that if we don't have boundary agreements in Sarpy County with the five cities trying to occupy and grow as each one for their own benefit, that all that we'll have is future lawsuits. So I'm going to vote for this because I think in the, in the main, it does a good thing. My amendment came not so much as from displeasure with anything that, boundaries with Springfield, but when I turned to the sewer map, that was the 22-year-old sewer map adopted by the county in 1995, I, I was puzzled. Now, that sewer map needs to be amended also because back in 1995, I think Sarpy County did a lousy job of predicting where growth would occur and did a terrible job of predicting Springfield's growth. And, you know, and so that's where the lawsuit came from. Springfield says, oh, we have this 22-year-old map drawn by people who aren't even here anymore, that somehow gets, gets interpreted to be an identification of where cities should be. Well, I'll start by saying it's none of the, none of the county's business where cities should be. That's the city's business, representing the residents of the city. And no, the county never did draw a map. When I look at this map, it's the sewer construction map and all it describes is geography. It describes where does the sewer flow. And to then flip that over and say, well, this map somehow identifies where cities can and can't grow in the future, I think is terribly wrong. It has nothing to do with municipal jurisdictions. Unfortunately, what I saw in the agreement was the word of jurisdictional boundaries being used in the context of this sewer map. And I said, no, no, we got to get rid of that word of jurisdictional boundaries because that's a planning and zoning concept and it doesn't necessarily have anything to do with where the fluid, where the sewage is going to flow. The sewage is going to flow where the sewage flows. And cities grow beyond that. Cities grow less than that. Whole different apples and oranges. Unfortunately, I think that's what the Supreme Court misunderstood when they addressed the lawsuit. But, you know, that's what they said, that somehow or other, where the sewer is going to flow has something to do where, with where a city can and can't be. So I took a look with some care at the Exhibit B, which is the amendment to the county's sewer map. And I had some concern because it shows, well, the green spacing, it shows Gretna sewer growth area going beyond, dropping down south of Highway of Interstate 80 at a point west of 180th Street and principally we're at 192nd Street. Now, I look at 192nd Street as, as maybe a key to the future of Sarpy County because I surmise that's where the future Platteview Road connection will be made with Interstate 80. And that will be a very important part of growth in Sarpy County. Of course, I think that that affects the citizens of Papillion and as we grow south, it'll affect them more and more. And at the time being, when that comes about, the city, the people, the residents of the city of Papillion, through their elected representatives ought to have some say with what goes on at any future interchange at 192nd Street and I-80. But yet, I looked at that map and I think, ooh, that's completely covered as Gretna. And then I looked at the language and I thought, ooh, we're using the term jurisdictional boundary in connection with this map. And again, I look and say, no, no, no. Jurisdictional boundaries have nothing to do with Exhibit B and where the sewer is going to flow. As I said, the sewage will flow where it flows and it doesn't look, care about city limits. It doesn't care about municipal zoning boundaries. And so I wanted to clarify through my amendment that when we vote in favor of this, at least when I vote in favor of this, this interlocal agreement, which has this change in the 1995 sewer growth map, that I, and I think that's, hope that's the sentiment of this entire city council and the city of Papillion, when we vote in favor of this amendment to the sewer construction map, we are not in any way conceding that, that the area of Sarpy County, south of Interstate 80, at any point, south of Interstate 80 as we move west, is anybody's exclusive jurisdiction and principally is not Gretna's exclusive jurisdiction. I don't want to get into a fight with Gretna, but I don't want people to misunderstand what a map that describes where the sewers go, or be more, more accurately, where sewage is going to flow, to misunderstand that map and what we've done with that map to think that by voting for this interlocal agreement, we are conceding that that area may, will always be, if it's inside any city, it'll be inside Gretna. That is not what I am voting for. It is not what that map says. It is not what the interlocal agreement says as amended. And I just wanted to make, put it on the record that in 30 years or whatever, if there's an argument, that somebody can go back and say, this is what the city of Papillion thought they were doing. They are not conceding that area principally 192nd Street as it intersects with I-80 as a area that must be within the municipal jurisdictional boundaries of any other city. That is open for argument in the future. And I think as the, interlocal agreement is now amended, I think that's what it says. And anybody who in the future may wish to misinterpret that, I think is just wrong. Whether it's the Supreme Court, whether it's Gretna, whether it's anybody else, they are wrong. That is not what we are voting on today.
Thank you very much. Mr. Ingberg.
As Councilman Mumgarth articulated, I'm, I'm kind of in the same position that he is in the fact that I was very cynical when I first saw the proposed boundary agreement. And it's not just because I didn't want to play nice with someone. It's a simple fact that prior to my time on the city council, when I was a department head for the city, the city entered into a boundary agreement at that time, which in looking back now was a horrible decision. I don't know if there was not enough caretakers at the time or I wasn't privy to those discussions, but it made me very skittish about entering another boundary agreement. I don't, as, as Tom articulated, I, I've always been of the opinion that natural growth of cities should determine the city's boundaries, not boundary agreements, not any sewer, sewer flow maps or anything like that. The growth of the city should determine where the boundaries go. That said, with Councilman Mumgarth's amendment, I have more of a comfort level with voting for it and I'll vote for it and support it. However, I also, as he articulated, don't look at this as anything but, anything but what it is, which is simply a resolution with the city of Springfield to resolve lawsuits despite the fact, the action we took, I think, was entirely illegal when we took it. But in the spirit of cooperation with another city and for further future growth of this community, I'll support it. One thing I will not do is, is look at that sewer map and assume that because the flow is a certain place, that is locking any communities out of certain areas, namely the city of Papillion. It seems to me, when you look at growth as it exists today, it makes absolute sense to me that the city is going to go, is going to grow and is going to grow west towards I-80. And, and I really believe that as time passes, this city will extend out to I-80 and point south. The sewer map should have no jurisdiction. If we grow there and it's in the city of Papillion's best interest to grow there to I-80, then that's what we should do. In the future, perhaps this will come before us with a boundary game with someone else. We don't know. But I want to be crystal clear that I hold my breath a little bit by voting yes for this because I'm not a big proponent of, of boundaries. But I think it's a proper solution for where we're at today. But in the future, the city will control its growth by, will control its boundaries by its growth and not by any artificial means. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Stube.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry. Thank you. I, I agree with, with Mr. Mumgarth from the standpoint of it's, it's natural growth and we reside Papillion and Springfield and Gretna and Bellevue, all within a county that's one of the fastest growing in the, in the United States. And so natural growth, there's no question, is, is something that we've recognized within the Papillion area as being something that we've taken advantage of. It's obvious based on statistics that have been presented to us that Papillion is an area that people want to, to develop within. But we also need to recognize that we are members of the same community and it's, it's beneficial for us all to, to try to have an understanding and have some cooperation between, you know, the areas that we all want to potentially see the growth in. So I, I plan to support this particular agreement. I don't have the longevity of Mr. Ingberg and Mr. Mumgarth to see some of the other boundary agreements that we've entered into. I was supportive of the, of the boundary agreement with Gretna, but I obviously live in the northern part of the Papillion community and so two sides to me essentially are La Vista and it's somewhat hard to understand west to me why that was essentially given up years ago to the city of La Vista when potentially that, that should have been within the Papillion area. So there are some downsides to, to entering into those types of agreements, but I think in this particular case, I think it's a good move on, on the city staff to, to go through and, and work to develop this particular agreement and therefore I plan to support it.
Thank you. Any other council discussion? Please vote on the motion as amended.
Eight yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. It's all the regular agenda items. Next is committee reports. I think the only committee that met is Finance Administration, which met tonight. Mr. Ingberg, I think you were the former chair. Report out from today's committee.
Yes, we met tonight to discuss, only one issue, the management exempt compensation program that was developed by city staff. After spending a great deal of time with some back and forth discussion, we will recommend that full council consider approval when it comes before as possible on October 18th. that full council consider approval when it comes before us possible to October 18th city council meeting. I will tell you, I think it's a, a fair compensation plan. I think it's a reasonable compensation plan. The committee as a whole made one suggestion, which we will support when it comes before the full council. I won't go into a lot of detail about that at this point, but I also want to mention that, get some thanks to Chris Myers, Assistant City Administrator, and Carrie Fredson from the HR Department, the HR Director, along with Dan Hoynes, the City Administrator. I know Chris and Carrie spent a good part of two years working very hard on this to make it fair, equitable, equitable, and reasonable for the, the community to support. They did a lot of hard work, a lot of good work, and it put some things in place that I think we needed to do, and I thank them for all their, their hard work. So that'll be before us here shortly, and the committee would recommend approval.
Did the committee elect a new chair?
Yes. Yes.
Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Next is comments from the floor. I'll start that off. I see we've got some students with us. Want to come up and introduce yourself, and maybe what brings you out? Come on up to the podium.
I'm Christopher Harris. I'm up here for an assignment to see how the city council works and how they do things.
High school assignment?
High school, yeah.
Who's your teacher?
Mr. Keller.
Thank you very much.
I'm Sebastian Arnold. I'm a Boy Scout, and I'm doing this for Communications.
Which troop are you with?
Troop 461.
Which, which is where?
St. Martha's.
Thank you very much. Any other students?
My name is Emily Sassney, and I'm here for an assignment for my government class.
Thanks. Any others? Last call.
I'm Quinn Lovlett-Williams. I'm here for Boy Scouts for Communications. I'm also from Troop 461, St. Martha's.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you guys coming out. You get to see a little bit of an unusual meeting tonight with the closed session. That's a, probably only happens a couple times a year. It's an important part of the government process, so don't take that lightly, that what, what we did there. Any other comments from the floor? Seeing no comments from the floor? Any council comments? Mr. Mumgarth.
Yeah, I, I'm late in saying this, but I wanted to point out that those two purchase agreements that we reached to purchase the land next to the park, I, I would, I think it's time to brag a little bit, council. I think that's an example of the government of Papillion responding to the needs and requests of individual citizens, that those citizens came forward to us because our, our expansion of that street was going to, in some fashion, affect the quality of their life negatively. And they came and came forward to us and asked us to buy that, and I think it should not just be seen as, well, the city bought some land to expand the park, but it was the city responded to some needs of the citizens. I should have said that at the time, but I'm sitting here sleeping.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from council? Just a couple things from the last couple of weeks. Tori Pantalian, who works for the city, is an instructor at UNO in a media class. He's done that for probably 10 or 12 years, and he invited me down to speak to his class, give the, give the elected officials perspective of working with the media. So that was, that was a fun discussion, and I think we're going to do that two more times, and so I appreciated that opportunity. The Papillion Community Foundation hosted an appreciation lunch for the city employees who help out with Papillion Days, so that's always a nice gesture of theirs. Sarpy County Economic Development Corporation had a board meeting. We are, we're, we're on the board there. A lot of discussion was Project Raven and the land they have optioned, and when that'll be turned over, and the, the annexation tonight was a key part of that discussion. I mean, the agreement tonight for the boundary agreement played into that. MAPPA, I think everybody was invited. I'm not sure who all participated. They had a number of sessions, but MAPPA had their Sarpy County Transit Feasibility Stakeholder Meeting that everybody was invited to, and I participated in one of those. Mr. Hoynes and I, this week, attended the United Cities Meeting. Lot of that discussion is just getting ready for the next legislative session. So I would say, if there are things that you're thinking about that we need to be addressing in this legislative session, this now would be a good time to start moving those up, because research needs to be done, and we need to start putting the strategy together on those items. That's, we're heading into a long session, I believe, and so if there's going to be any work, it's going to be in this session, so bring those forward if you've got them. And then met with a scout troop tonight from St. Columbokil. Just a couple of reminders again that Mr. Hoynes already mentioned. Goldsberry House is going to be burned on Thursday as a training exercise. Had some questions from the community of why we're burning a good house. I think it's important for people to realize that we did look at the potential of having that house moved, and the house was in very bad condition, not worth salvaging. But we did invite Habitat for Humanity in, and they actually went into the house, salvaged everything they could, and so a lot of that house will actually go into another property through their programs, and then it's going to serve a lot of training needs. And then, as was mentioned, cleanup is Thursday through Sunday, the 21st to the 23rd. Mr. Mumgarth, did you have something?
I was just going to suggest that maybe a legislative suggestion would be that somebody goes back and amend the Sewer Act, and so that people don't misunderstand what it means to city expansion, but we'll discuss that later.
The one thing about United Cities is everything has to be unanimous. We'll see if we can get unanimous on that one or not. Any other council comments? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Glover?
Second.
Second by Councilman Clupe.
E A zero nays.
We are adjourned. Thank you.